Commissioner John Paul Young, will you do the pledge of allegiance? Soon as we start to stream. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Caddo Parish Regular Session Meeting. At this time, we would ask everyone to please silence your cell phones that are ringing as I'm speaking. Engover yourselves accordingly. We will have our roll call by Clark.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crackman is absent at the moment. Commissioner Greg Young. Present. There you go. I saw you sit down. I wasn't sure if you heard me. Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Burrell is absent at the moment. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson appears to be absent at the moment. So you have nine commissioners present, three absent, and that does constitute a quorum.
Okay, if you will please stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Hast thou not known, hast thou not heard, that the everlasting God fainteth not? There's no searching of his understanding. He giveth power to the fainting; to them that has no might, he increases their strength. Even the youth grow weary, and the young men shall utterly fall. But they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings as eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint. God, we invoke your presence over this meeting today. We thank you, Lord, for all that you have done and all that you will do. Lord, we dare not do this without you, O God, and we thank you for being in our presence. It is in your son, Jesus Christ's name, that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, run to the appropriate salute for you. And while we recite the pledge, please keep in mind those missing in action and our prisoners of war. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, next item, please.
Okay, that brings us. That brings us to agenda additions where there are a few potential agenda additions. I know that the third one that I have listed on the electronic agenda, that sponsor has opted not to add that today. The other two, I'm not sure.
It's been motioned by the chair to add these two potential agenda additions. Okay, and it's been second. That was Commissioner Stefan Jones. I'm sorry, and Parliamentarian Thomas, I didn't see it on the board. At this time, we will open for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against adding these two potential agenda addition items? Special resolution for Brenda Ashley and a special resolution for Bishop Joseph Walker. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay. It would be appropriate at this time, if there was a motion to expand the agenda, to include these items.
It's already been motioned by the chair and second by Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Commissioner Young. Both Youngs. Thank you. And Commissioner Burrell is actually here as well. And has cast a yea vote. So those items will be added to the agenda under your special resolutions section. So those items will become. They will become the final two items in section eight.
Thank you.
And that brings us now to citizens' comments, where citizens who'd like to address the commission on any issue other than zoning are asked to fill out a comment card. Those are located in the foyer and can be submitted in this clear box to my left. The ones that have been received already have been presented to the chairwoman. And comments are limited to three minutes.
All right. I have one comment card, Brenda O'Brock.
And commissioners, you will find Mr. Brock also asked to distribute a slip of paper that accompanies her comment. It's at your stations.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brenda O'Brock, 248 Lake Point Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I've been coming to these parish commission meetings for about forty years.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. And for the audience to understand that I have given a Socrates quote to each one of the Caddo Parish Commissioners, and I'm going to read it to you. Does everybody have theirs? Thank you. Wave them high if you haven't already thrown it away. Okay. "The secret of change is to focus all of your energy, not on fighting the old, but on building the new." Now, that was Socrates a long time ago. And I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and you're still fighting the sum of the same things. I'd like to see Shreveport and Caddo move forward. Caddo Parish Commissioner Chris Crackman, please continue representing the people of Caddo, all Republican, Democrats, no party, all black, white, Hispanic, Asian, et cetera. And thank you for not dimming your light to make others comfortable when they need to be exposed. Thank you for being bold, for doing what is right, for speaking out, and for not being sold to the highest bidder. If our commission chooses to pay for attorney fees for some commissioners, but not all commissioners, these differences must be talked about publicly and dealt with accordingly. Citizens of Caddo want all commissioners' attorneys' fees paid while they are defending taxpayers and exposing corruption. This is the job we elected our commissioners to do. Pay Caddo Commissioner Chris Crackman's attorney fees now, and he and his family should also be reimbursed for pain, suffering, and mental anguish too.
Okay, I do not have any other citizens' comment cards. Mr. Clark, next item, please.
That brings us to visitors, where we don't have any scheduled visitors under this section. We do have some visitors that are scheduled that will come up under another session a little bit later. But our next item to address is adopting regular session minutes, which will also include the special session minutes from October night.
All right. It's been moved by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and second by Commissioner John Paul Young. Right? Commissioner Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Nothing.
Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner John Paul Young. All right. Commissioner Catherine.
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to move and adopt the regular session minutes and also the special minutes as well. Inglowbo.
A second.
What's that? I'm sorry.
A second.
Oh.
Okay. So you have a substitute motion to move to inglobo and adopt the regular session and special session minutes?
Correct.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with eleven in support, none in opposition, and one absent, and brings us to special resolutions. We have five special resolutions up for consideration today. Would you like me to read them individually or?
Yes, the special resolutions that are listed?
Yes.
Please read them.
Okay, it is a special resolution commemorating Booker T. Washington High School's seventy-fifth anniversary, a special resolution for the Greater Zion Mission Baptist Church's one-hundredth anniversary, and a special resolution commemorating the thirtieth anniversary of Chimp Haven, as well as a special resolution recognizing Brenda Ashley and a special resolution recognizing Joseph Walker.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and a second from Commissioner John Paul Young. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to inglobo and adopt special resolutions eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, and eight point five. And I welcome and yield any commissioners who'd like to speak on their resolutions.
All right. And that second was also by Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to be added to the special resolution.
Okay.
Which one?
All five.
Or all of them? Okay.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question. I had a call from a constituent today in reference to the special resolutions. And my question is probably more to Jeff than anybody. When a citizens go online to look at these, can they actually see the actual revolutions as well?
Typically, yes. Occasionally, if it was a, for instance, maybe an agenda addition, we may be doing that more by title. But if it is a typical process on a normal special resolution, you're going to see it on the agenda by title during the work session. Sometimes we'll have it linked on the work session as well, but we almost always have it linked on the regular session. Okay, thank you very much. And if they would like to see one that's been adopted in the past, we do have a minutes page that has past agendas and minutes. They can look through the minutes and find it. Or I find the fastest way, sometimes if you're looking to reference one that's been voted on already, is to go to the previous agenda and just click on the hyperlink there.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussions, please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with eleven in support, none in opposition, and one absent. And as far as I know, I believe somebody was planning to be here from Chimp Haven?
Is there anyone here to receive Chimp Haven's resolution? Okay?
Okay, maybe we'll reschedule that?
Yes.
I know they had reached out saying that was a potential need to reschedule, but they thought they would probably be here. But we'll be glad to reschedule it for next time.
Thank you.
That brings us to communicates and committee reports, where the first item under our section is administrative response to information requests from commissioners. And the administration does have a few guests as well.
All right.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I just want to let you know, the budget retrieve, we had a budget retrieve scheduled for next week. We're rescheduling that to November twelfth, Wednesday, November twelfth. We're also planning our grand opening for the Walter B. Jacobs Nature Center for December fifth at ten o'clock. You, I'm sorry, December fourth. Sorry, December fourth at ten a.m. We'll provide you more information on that. We do have a few visitors today. The first one we have is Ms. Christie Gustafson with Community Foundation. I think she's, yes.
A quick question before Ms. Gustafson comes. Mrs. Seale, in December fourth, is that the same day as our meeting?
Yes, so this is at ten and the meeting's at three thirty.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It was, we tried not to schedule that day, but it was unavoidable. We've had delays.
That's the day after budget, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms.
Hey, how are y'all? Thanks for having me. Good afternoon. I'm going to be quick. So Community Foundation, as many of you know, releases the community council report every year. It's a report card kind of on the data of the community in six categories: population, economic well-being, human capital, health, social environment, and physical environment. Well, I just want to tell you all, this year, the report has forty-one indicators in it. And in this year's report, the Shreveport Bejure MSA improved or held its ranking in thirty of the forty-one indicators. That's the best year we've ever had since 2015. So, I know, it's exciting. So when you're looking at the data report and you see a negative data point, just realize that they're, that they are trending in an upward trajectory. So that's really exciting. So to that end, next slide, please. So we did, and I have talked to you all about this before, so maybe really brief and then let you ask me questions if you want. I'm really here for an update. You know, we have, and here are a couple of slides from that report. We've worked really hard on an early childhood education initiative, and these are some of the numbers of why. So what I really want you to take a look at here is the top line. Families below the poverty level for the Shreveport Bejure MSA are fourteen point eight percent. And then you're going to see the breakdown by race and sex below that. The next slide. Okay, the poverty rate for families with children under five is twice that of the regular rate. So what this is saying to us is that families who have young children are struggling more than families who have older children. It stands to reason, right? You're young, you make less money at that age. But we have a much greater number of kids, families in poverty with kids under five. So that's one of the reasons that we came together to do the Early Childhood Summit. You can advance the slide. And this is the real reason. The steady decline in kindergarten readiness in the ten years before we had this summit, which was in 2018. And you can see it, you can see it has continued to go down. And it was really a ten percent decrease in twenty eighteen before we even started, and we've had a, we had a big dip in 2023. I'm going to hypothesize why, and we'll talk about that. But I just wanted, this is, this is the reason that we're doing what we're doing. Okay, next slide. This is a breakdown, because we're working exclusively with Caddo Parish on our early childhood initiative. This last, that last slide was the MSA level, which is our three parishes. This is a breakdown of the parishes. You can see that Caddo's in the orange. I'm happy to say, we'll look at DeSoto, Caddo, and Bejure all had a massive dip in 2023. I think there are two things at play here. One, those are COVID babies going to kindergarten. Two, the metric by which kindergarten readiness is measured was changed by the state. And I think that there's always a timeframe where that is a struggle. It just so happened to be changed in the same timeframe that COVID babies were going to school. What you should really pay attention to is the fact that Caddo has really sprung back from 2023 to 2024. I know that doesn't look like a huge jump, but it's statistically significant. So we're glad to see that, and we're doing some great things with the Caddo ECE program. So why does kindergarten readiness matter? I've told you all this nine million times, but we rely heavily on a study from Johns Hopkins that studied nine thousand schoolchildren in Baltimore from kindergarten to fourth grade. And that study found that students in fourth grade who began kindergarten behind were up to eighty percent more prone to be held back, eighty percent more likely to be, to require individualized services and support, and seven times more likely to be suspended or expelled. And access to early childcare and education is really unaffordable for most families. It's about nine thousand dollars a year. So you can go ahead. Major brain development occurs in the first few years of life. Of course, we know working parents have to have childcare. You can keep clicking. There, go to the next one, yeah. And then you can go to the next one also. This is our, these are our summit pictures. Some of you in the room are there. And you can go to the next slide. Keep clicking. There you go. So we all came together around these issues that major brain development occurs in the early years and working parents need childcare. And research shows high-quality birth to five, early childhood education provides a return on investment of thirteen percent. So we created our ECE steering committee, as you know, and, and came up with a scholarship program. So as a reminder, to be eligible for the scholarships, the child has to be between zero and three. They have to be below a certain income threshold, and that's set by the state. And then their parents or caregivers have to be working in school or seeking employment through the state employment office. So we're tracking and measuring our own results, and we are third, and we're about to get the fourth year of results. So fingers crossed, but all three years have looked great. So you can go ahead. Result number one, ECE scholarships have resulted in an increase in type-three childcare enrollment. We have scholarshiped over a thousand kids over the last three years. Keep clicking. I think that's animated. There you go. You can go ahead, too. So these are the increases in numbers based on age of infants, one-year-olds, two-year-olds, and three-year-olds. Those are the groups that we're working with, increased numbers into preschool. And you can see, we've more than doubled the infants and the one-year-olds, and a really big increase in twos as well. So that's what we're aiming for. Next slide. Result two, we have increased revenue for the childcare centers. Remember, the type-three childcare centers are privately owned businesses. You can see the districts that they, that the eighteen that we're working with are housed in. And we are so proud of the hard work that they do on a daily basis. We're also really excited that we're going to offer y'all a chance, if you want to, to go tour one or more of these centers in the very near future. I'll send you more information on that. And then result number three, you can go ahead. Kids who attend type-three childcare centers are more kindergarten-ready than their peers who don't. So the first year we did this, I told you all that metric changed, so you can watch it in real time here. The first year we did this, there was an ice-deep literacy screener for kindergartners. And you can see the children in the blue are the ones that go to type-three childcare centers. Low-income kids that are, had, received scholarships in some cases, a hundred percent, in some cases, partial, depending on the program they're using, doing over twice as well on the exam as the kids who stay home, and then really keeping up with private pay peers. Next slide. We see the same happening, the same trends in 2023, only the state divided the reading and the math scores. But you still see the same trend. Kids in type-three childcare centers are doing far better than their peers who stay at home. So fast forward to 2024, next slide. These are our most recent scores, and we're anxiously awaiting in November, we should have the twenty-five scores. That, these show as well that kids in type-three childcare centers are doing far better than their peers who stay at home. So you remember that slide that showed that big dip in the last two years? So when I look at my data, y'all, my kids in the blue bar don't have that dip. They've been insulated from that dip because they are at early learning centers and are thriving. And so, and you can even, it's really cool. You can look at the breakdown by school. So we follow the kids to their kindergarten, and then I have each of the, this elementary school's results. Of course, the children's names aren't there, it's just numerical, but have all of their results. And you can see, you know, these are the type, the kids that went to type-three childcare centers, and these are the kids that stayed at home. So I'm, this tells me not only that what we're doing is really serving the families that we're trying to serve, but also that we're insulate, we insulated some of the kids that, you know, had some language deficiencies through COVID. I should say, too, the math portion of the exam was not made mandatory until the fall of 2024. Some schools offered it the year before, but now it is totally mandatory. So we have a literacy screener and a numeracy screener in kindergarten, and they're both mandatory at this time. You can go ahead. And this is really exciting amount of money that we leveraged for those three years, twenty-five million dollars. And I'm working to leverage even more. We promised the state that we'd have between two and three million dollars, to get two and three million dollars of matching state money in January. So I have to tell them every fall, we think we can raise X amount of dollars. And then in January, I have to tell them the real, down-to-the-penny amount. And so we told them, we anticipate anything between two to three. I always give them the high number. You can go, you can go back, but you can't go up. So I tell them three as a max, hoping that we'll get somewhere between two and three. But that's where we get those matching dollars, when you see that red bar. It's dollar-for-dollar match from the state. So we really think Caddo Parish is on an upward trajectory, and that early education is the answer to continuing that. We're working on permanent funding. And my call to y'all is this, and I would love to sit down and talk to each and every one of you about it. I want to make Caddo Parish the first parish slash county in the country that provides early education for all children that need it and whose caregivers would like to receive it. I really think this is doable based on the number of kids that we have entering kindergarten every year. I also think it's doable relative to the fact that we have fifty-five type-three childcare centers. And reminder, these are small business owners in y'all's districts. So, you know, these are folks that are really plugging in taxpayers and making a difference where they live. So I would like for that to happen for Caddo Parish. That it will happen, and I'm happy to discuss it with any of you. Would love to give you my ideas. I think we could do this with an innovative mixed-delivery approach that includes Head Start, type-three centers, and also the Caddo LA4 classrooms. So those are classes that Caddo Parish runs with money from LDOE at their school sites to ensure all kids who want to go to preschool and their parents want them to have access. This will lower dropout rates, lower behavioral issues, raise their graduation rates, lower crime, create a stronger workforce, and which in turn helps with economic development. So not only are we helping those small businesses, but what we'd like to do is help all of our large business owners by ensuring that their employees are able to be at work every day because they have excellent childcare. So, next slide. That's it. I hope I didn't talk too fast. First of all, thank y'all for giving me the time. Questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Will this PowerPoint be available to us?
Considerate, yeah. I'll email it to Jeff. Can I email it to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes, I'll share it with y'all.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
We have a couple commissioners on the board that has some questions.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Christie, for the update. What percent of the eligible population do you think you're capturing in your program? That, what was it? I can't remember, there was two, two thousand five hundred or something in the last year?
Yeah, not enough.
What percent do you think that represents?
So, okay. When you're looking at that, can you pull that slide back up with all the, has that list of numbers?
The table?
So, so last year is three, this is really funny because, and memorable for an obvious reason. Last year, three thousand three hundred and thirty-three children enrolled in kindergarten in Caddo Parish. Easy to remember.
That's all, three thousand? I really didn't have an idea, but three thousand three hundred and thirty-three.
Yeah, that was the enrollment number for Caddo Parish last year.
Does that mean K, like, in K four?
K five.
K five.
Yep, yep. And so we are, you're just going to serve a few, a couple of hundred of those a year with the type-three childcare, a few hundred of those a year with the type-three childcare center. Now, if you look overall, because when you're looking at that chart, it's adding them all up. So it's adding the zeros, the ones, the twos, the threes, the fours, right? And those are the ones that, that enter. So.
But not all of those kids, those are all, three thousand three hundred and thirty-three kids were in kindergarten total. So that included.
That's my, that's my memory.
Yeah, well, that's not.
Okay.
That includes all economic categories.
Yes.
So, so, and if you had, if you had three hundred attending, that's ten percent of all categories.
Correct. So that's, we're probably a little under that.
But we're really only focused on, your program only focused on that economically.
Economically challenged, demographic of the cohort, yes.
So you're, you may, you should be capturing a much larger percentage of that cohort.
Yeah. And you know what? I can actually, Commissioner Atkins, I can do the, I can run some numbers and send you my, it's not going to be perfect, but based on the overall total of people in poverty versus, and I may ask Superintendent Burton if he can give me the number. If he can give me.
Just a rough.
A poverty number for his student population, too, that'll help me out. And then I can.
You may be capturing over half of that.
I don't, I don't think that the type-threes you're capturing over half, but I think if you look at type-three plus Head Start plus LA4, you're getting a good percentage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll, I'll forward that to all y'all, so that's a good question.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much for this presentation, Christie. I wanted to know what, it can be a rough number, but what is the cost of sending one kid to a type-three pre-K school?
I think you could average it at about ninety-five hundred dollars a year. And so if y'all look at, like, if you're looking at the median income in our MSA, it's around forty thousand. So imagine what a giant percentage of folks' income that is. But there are some, you know, it varies from center to center. And the interesting thing about owning a childcare center, and the amazing people that own them can speak to this way better than me, but you really lose money on the babies, and you make, you make money for the centers on the older kids because you need less teachers in the classroom. You know, there's ratios that are prescribed by the state about how many kids to teachers. And so, you know, some centers will choose not to, you know, have one-year-old classrooms and classrooms from zero to one because it's more expensive. And so that's one thing that I think, this is. And so that's one thing that I think, this is, the state putting out those matching dollars and letting, which gives us the ability to do this, really incentivizes the centers to have, to spread that cost amongst all age of the kids, so.
Terrific. So if, if an entity gives your organization 47, 50, then the state matches that number?
Dollar-for-dollar, yes.
And that's enough to send a kid to pre-K per year?
Yes. Well, and the logistics of the way it works is we try to raise anywhere between $2 and $3 million from various sources, as you know, because we've asked the commission for funding before. But we try to raise between $2 and $3 million from various sources. And then in January, we'll tell, we'll tell the state, this is the exact amount that we raise, and they'll give us a dollar-for-dollar match for that. So we basically spend that money. So if we raise 3, we'll have 6 million. We basically spend it until we hit 0. And, you know, the first year we did this, I'll tell y'all, I was really concerned that we, we wouldn't be able to find enough families quickly because you have to spend it within one year, or you have to give it back to the state. And I was like, we're not giving it back. But we had enough kids enrolled by, from January to May of the first year that we did it, to, to spend the money out. Because, you know, if a kid's enrolling for an entire year, and, and be mindful, too, this is a 12-month school cycle. These kids go to school, early childhood centers are open all summer long. So the kids are there, not just nine or 10 months like traditional school, but all 12, so.
Thank you. And one more question. I believe in a previous meeting, you've told me what kind of savings accrue to communities that invest in kids in this way through the social impact and reduction in delinquency and incarceration. Do you still run those numbers?
Yeah, well, I, I didn't. So a Nobel Prize-winning economist named James Heckman did, and I reference him. But, so he reports that you're getting, like, a 13% return for every dollar you spend on early education. So that's your, essentially, your savings over time because you're not having to spend money on, you know, interventions and that kind of thing.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. Christie, thank you so much for coming in and sharing this information. I have three questions for you. The first, I noticed that there were no centers in my district. And I consider my district to, and first, I'd like to say, I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent. I consider myself a very diverse, but a very transitional district. And having lived and worked and been an employer for 30-plus years, I'm surprised that there's not a facility there. But I was gonna ask you, is that because there are other options that people are aware of for help? And?
So the, that list that we gave is not an exhaustive list of all the centers. Those are just the 18 that we're providing scholarships for. So that's part A of the question. And, and the way that we decide on those centers is they apply. So the, the centers are graded by the state. Every year they receive, there's a grading system that the state utilizes to ensure that they're, you know, utilizing the correct curriculum and with fidelity and all that kind of stuff. So there's a grading system, and what we did at the steering committee level is we decided we're gonna work with the top two tiers of centers first. And we started with 10 the first year, and then there were 18 the next year. So the application timeframe is actually really soon, and centers that want to apply to be a part of that, the next cohort can. Forgive me, because I don't know, the districts are hard to, there, I know of at least one childcare center, if not two, in your district. Neither of them are in the scholarship program. And now, one of them, however, I am fairly certain serves the zeros and the ones and the twos. But I'm gonna look that up for you and email you because I don't, I don't have them all, I mean, there are 55, so I don't have them all memorized. And especially with the, the district geography. But I, I believe there are at least two in your district, and I'll, I can confirm that for you.
And then, this is based on economics, correct? So what about families that fall into a quick transition of economics because of either A, life change? Can they, in the middle of a school season, access this? Or also families that they end up with multiples that put them in the bracket of some financial childcare, poverty?
Yeah.
That you quickly turn into, where you, you desperately need help?
Yep.
And then, is that a consideration? And then, how do parents find out about this information to have help?
I'm gonna answer the second one, because that was really easy. CaddoSmartStart.com is where you start, and they, they facilitate all of the applications for all early childhood options in Caddo Parish. So they're kind of the clearinghouse for the applications, and then they'll help pair the family with, you know, the family has, in the scholarship program, which is amazing, freedom of choice of the schools that they want to send their kids to. But also, you know, some of it has to do with, what funding sources are available as to when the family comes in the door. So it may be, you know, they may apply to go to a Head Start center, they may apply to go to a type-three center, they may apply to go to a pre-K4, and it's all, it's all the same application.
Is it provided at, at the doctor's offices and centers when the caregivers are taking children for shots?
So I actually have, I'm actually hoping to meet with the, and I don't remember the name of it, but like, the local pediatric group in town to ask them if they will house the information at their offices. Because we house it in some public spaces, but I really think pediatricians would be helpful. And then, forgive me, what was the first part of your question?
Well, I was wondering about families that have a transition of an economic.
So a family can apply anytime throughout the year. I mean, it could be, like, if you moved here in March and you want to get your kid into ECE in April, you can go ahead and apply. Now, whether or not they're gonna get a spot depends on a couple of different things. Whether or not there's still funding available from the various sources. And then two, whether or not there's a, a spot open at the particular center that they want to go to. So if there's not, I will, I will say that there's usually a waiting list carried of, you know, maybe 20, maybe 30 families. It doesn't usually get much higher than that because, you know, kids transition in and out of ECE all throughout the year because it's a year-round program versus, you know, the traditional, we're going in the fall and ending in the spring. So the resources are there and available. And I think, you know, really, the only hindrance to a family getting in is, is there space open and is there money available? And of course, the later in the year you go, probably the harder it is for there to be funding. But also, you know, kids age out, they move, whatever the case is. So, you know, they're kind of coming in and out of that system a good bit. So I would always like for there to be more funding available for more spots. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
All right. Mrs. CEO?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Mr. Lamar Greenhouse with AT&amp;T to give a broadband update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, thanks for having us, commissioners. My name is LeVar Greenhouse. I'm the Regional Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. Basically, what that means is I'm your liaison. Administrator Brian has my contact information. So if there's ever any issues that you, your constituents have, I'm your first point of contact. So please, don't hesitate to reach out, call, text, email me. But she can socialize my number with any one of you and contact me if there's any, ever any issues. Once again, I represent AT&amp;T. On behalf of the 3,000 employees, our State President, David Aubrey, thank you guys for having us. What, me and my team, I have Wayne Stein, our Associate Director of Engineering, Nika Echols, our Associate Director of Network, and Tim Johnson represents our master contractor. We're here briefly just to talk about our overbuild and fiber expansion network, efforts in Caddo. And what that looks like is we're placing new fiber to new subdivisions, but we're also, and we're going to go into more detail, where what we call overbuilding our old network. So what you see, we have copper, older facilities, DSL, et cetera. We're upgrading that to fiber so that you can have the latest and greatest in your network. So you might go from a few megs with that DSL to 5 gig with your fiber network opportunities. But what we're also here doing, we're talking about, AT&amp;T has invested more than $2.1 billion in the state of Louisiana, upgrading our network. And what does that look like for Caddo? That looks like bringing fiber to neighborhoods, bringing fiber to businesses, but it also looks like bringing cell towers to improve your network and your wireless network infrastructure. We're seeing a mass influx of people using cellular devices, whether it's first net from our first responders, or just basic calls, children being on social media, utilizing those wireless devices. So we're ma, making a cognitive effort to upgrade our wireless infrastructure across the state, but also in Caddo, Shreveport, and the neighboring areas. We, we do a lot of great work. Some of the issues that we do run into, Nika can probably go into a lot of details, we run into a lot of copper theft. And when the copper is stolen, we work with Chief, Chief Smith, Sheriff Whitehorn to make sure they're aware of those items, those issues. But what that looks like for the constituents is your cellphone service is disrupted. Your home internet is disrupted. We're not inflicting this on ourself. Nika's team spends countless hours dealing with copper theft. We have some great legislation, Senate Bill 22 passed this year, which kind of criminalizes copper theft, increases fines. But we are dealing with a rash of copper thefts in Shreveport, Bossier, more rural, not saying that Bossier's rural, but the rural areas, where they can go in like a thief in the night and steal the cable, and that impacts our network. We're dealing with a rash of copper fiber cuts. So that impacts your home internet, it also impacts your wireless capabilities, right? So sometimes your cellphones may not work. We're not cutting ourselves, and we're being cut a lot of times by outside contractors. Wayne, Nika, and team are working to resolve those issues. But with the amount of fiber work that's being done in the state of Louisiana, because of the Gumbo Act, we're seeing a lot more people placing fiber in the network. So we appreciate your patience. We are trying to work around those issues, but we are trying to do a lot of great work in Caddo and the surrounding areas. So at this time, I'll kick it over to Wayne, who's our engineering lead, as well as Nika, who runs our network operations. And what Nika's team does, once we place the fiber and you order it, Nika has technicians, where she supervises managers of technicians, that will come in and install that fiber, give you white-glove treatment, and make sure that you enjoy our fiber services. But right now, I'll kick it over to Wayne, and I'll kick it over to Nika, and thank you, guys.
Thank y'all so much for allowing us to come speak with y'all today. Again, my name is Wayne Stein. I'm the Associate Director for Engineering and for AT&amp;T. We're bringing fiber not just to the new neighborhoods, to, to every facility around. We have a bill plan that stretches through 25, 26, and 27 right now. And we plan on covering the majority of the area as soon as we can. So really, I mean, LeVar kind of gave us the gist of what we're doing. So I'll open the floor for any questions that you might have.
Yes, we do, we do have several questions that are on the board. You have one more presenter? All right.
He's what I'm master contractor. So any questions discussing construction, door hangers, restoration, things of that nature, we'll let him address.
Okay.
And before we open it for questions, before they begin work, they place out a sign similar to that in the front of the neighborhood, but, but they also place these door hangers on the front doors. We can't put them in mailboxes, that's illegal. But we do put them on front doors to let people know that we are coming, and we provide a contact number on those door hangers. That way, if there's any issues, they can reach out directly to our master contractor. Let's say there is some dirt that needs to be replaced, there's some drainage issues that arise. That contact number, so we advocate that people keep these, not just get them and throw them away. That way, they have a primary point of contact between their property owner and our contractor to get those issues resolved quickly. But also, that way, we don't have to involve the commissioners. Y'all don't have to waste resources because they can go directly to our contractor to get those issues resolved.
That's a great tool.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burrell, who has been the champion for this, is definitely on board to speak. You have the floor?
I'm not a champion, I'm just a pain in the ass when it comes down to this. And I'm sure you probably know me because I spent 22 years designing fiber and copper with AT&amp;T, Bell South, Southside Bell, all those. But anyway, I had asked you all to come, and I appreciate you coming so that they can put a face with the work. I had come home one day and, and I saw holes in my yard, and I did not get a leaflet. And so I asked the administrator if she would contact Mr. Aubrey and let him know that, that I had constituents in the neighborhood asking me questions that I couldn't answer. But, but being with the AT&amp;T for a while, I know that I could go to the contractors and try to get some answers since I didn't see any AT&amp;T trucks around. It was mostly the contractors. And they happened to be Hispanic, so, so they, they, I was able to find somebody who could explain some of it to me. So I was able to, to arrest some of the fears that my neighbors had. But again, I do appreciate you all coming because I felt that, that my colleagues need to see what was going on and get some progress. I still do not care for a piece of paper that was sent by Comcast unless they are here today.
They're not here today, Commissioner, but we are working for them to get here at a later date. They could not be here today.
Well, I think, I think just out of courtesy, they can come here and talk to our commissioners because this can, this piece of paper can't answer questions that you won't answer directly at the time. So that was my biggest concern. You all are still in the service business. And one thing I did learn in the 22 years that, you know, businesses like ours are about service, about public service. So, you know, that meant a lot to me, so I appreciate you all coming. So if there's any other question, I'll just turn it over to the others, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, Mr. Greenhouse, I want to thank you for replying to my messages. You've, you've always been quite responsive, and I appreciate that. The bad news is that I had to reach out to you a number of times. So just kind of educate me, I mean, are you, do you all have power of eminent domain? You can come and, like, lay a cable through people's yards? Or, or in some cases, I think you all cut through driveways and things like that? Is that all just part of your, you know, authority to do so?
So in my last life, I'll speak to what I used to know. So we, we operate in a right-of-way. So what we normally do, we submit a permit or request to the parishes of the city, let them know that we will be operating in this particular area. And what happens, it takes several months to design a job. So our engineering team will release that job to us, or to our construction team. At that point, they'll submit the permit, and then we order the cable. And the cable comes in, and then Tim and team have to work that into their schedule, right? Because we can only, we try just to work limited section at a time because what we don't want is to inundate the area, right? And have 10 jobs going on at one time, calling in massive locates because that also stresses the parish and the city's resources. So we try to keep it sectionalized, and then at that point, we begin to work. So we operate in the right-of-way for older subdivisions, but in newer subdivision, we also operate in the east. So we call in locates, we begin that placement method. I believe in Shreveport, we have some real lot. So we have real lot, and if it's real lot, we don't like the design of real lot.
What are you?
In the back of the house, real lot.
Oh, the rear lot, okay.
That's the country in this environment.
I'm sorry, I just.
But in the back of your home. So we try not to operate in the real lot, just for a couple of reasons. It's easier to operate in the front. There's not as many obstructions. People have built pools, gates, fences. So we try to operate in the front as much as possible. But there is real lot access, and if that's the only place we can place, that's where we place. But we call in locates, we have to bore under driveways, we have to place handholds or structures to access the fiber at a later date. But hopefully, after all that said and done, Tim's team is coming back and cleaning that up and making it look presentable for you guys.
Okay, and I guess my interaction with you was maybe six months ago, I can't remember. And I don't remember any flyers at that time. Is that a new, a new practice?
It's an ongoing process. I'll put it like that.
It's a practice that needs to be improved since then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we, that's why Tim is here. Tim is engaged, and Tim can kind of speak to the process of it.
Well, I think that's a good idea. That'll help a lot.
So we have a couple different pieces of literature.
Like Lavar said, I'm sorry, my name's Tim Johnson. I work for Devaney Construction. We have our subcontractors that come out to do this neighborhood work. They will go out ahead of us or ahead of their workers and hang these door hangers. Now, at first glance, it's kind of a dual door hanger. Part of it saying, hey, AT&amp;T Fiber is coming to your neighborhood. The other half is if you have any issues with the construction type work, call this number. So that is, a sprinkler head gets broke. I mean, you're going to have inadvertent issues like that. So if it's, if that's the case, they can call us direct. We'll come back out, fix it. If we have sunken holes, something that is not quite right, call us, we'll come back, take a look at it.
I understand, I applaud that approach because it wasn't, that, that approach wasn't, wasn't in place when we had the fiber coming through much of my district. So I'm glad you've adopted that technique.
Yes, I mean, they're putting them out. We're going through boxes of them monthly. We have another one, like Lavar mentioned, the rear easement access. If we need to get in your backyard, we leave our own card to give the reason why. You know, maybe to access the rear lot easement and gates locked, something like that. Dogs, that's a big one. And then we carry these little cards, our people plus our subcontractors. If you pull up on us and like, hey, what's going on? I can hand you this card. Here, here's our number. If you need something, give us a call. We're more than happy to help. The last thing we want to do is damage anybody's property.
Madam President, I can't remember if I had the floor or not, but if so, if so, I'm now done. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Greg Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for coming today. I just have just a couple of questions and, you know, we can move it on. In terms of the funding for this project, the source of the funding, is this money that AT&amp;T is investing? Or in part, is some of this money coming from the federal government?
In Shreveport, we stay to Caddo. Because we do have pockets where we have subsidized funding. But in Caddo, that is all of our investment. So when you pay your bill, we reinvest that money to expand it and improve the network. So we have no subsidized funding in Shreveport.
So none of this is a product of the Build Back Better Initiative?
No, no, sir, not from the Gumbo.
No, you're correct. Everything in Caddo is, we're financing ourselves, we're paying for it.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
In terms of, in terms of our timetable, everybody wants to know when we're going to have a competitor for the current vendor that most of us use here in Caddo. Whether it's Hughes Net, whether it's Direct TV, whether it's what's used to be called Cable Vision. I don't pay the bill, my wife does. But I know it's about, I know it's over $250 a month. So it seems that there needs to be some competition in this area. So to the extent that we're going to have another major player providing internet service in our community, I think that would be helpful. I know some of my colleagues that live in the urban area, you probably already have high-speed internet service by AT&amp;T. But some of the folks in my district and in Chris Crackman's district and probably in Mr. Commissioner Lazar's district probably don't have access to this high-speed internet. So in terms of the timetable that you all, I'd imagine you all have designed. Can you all provide us a timetable where it be per district or zip code or some other grid apparatus that you all are using? Can you give us, give us some indication as to what your estimated time of completion is going to be?
Estimated time of completion is tough. It takes about six, eight months to design a neighborhood. Permit process, material. So we try to work about a year out. That's why we have a 25 plan, a 26 plan and a 27 plan. And we can't inundate one particular area because locates can't keep up. Nor do you want to really swamp, you know, and put eight or nine jobs out in one location. So we, we bounce it around. We work, we'll be working all different areas. So I can't really specifically say what neighborhood would come at what time.
Right, let me offer the question a different way then. Okay, I know my very good colleague, Commissioner Burrell, has cited that you're all in his neighborhood. Therefore, you're in his district. When do you all anticipate you're going to get to the more peripheral areas of Shreveport and Caddo?
And Commissioner Young, what I can do, for proprietary reasons, we can't leave maps. But after this meeting, I can read out to you our Administrator Bryant and share that information with you. We just can't publicly display that information. But to Wayne's point, we bounce around from district to district. So to say when we're going to be finishing District Five or District Two or District Seven, that's hard for us to pinpoint. Because we have to go through the permitting process. We have to go through the design phase. We have to look at, is it real lot versus front lot? We have to look at, is the right-of-way big enough for us to kind of get in there? What competitors we have there? So it's a, it's a very loaded question because it's not a simple answer. We have to look at a lot of variables. But we, what we try to do, we try to be as equitable as possible where we place. We don't focus all on District Five. I'm picking on Commissioner Burrell right now.
I'm glad you're there.
I know you'd be fine with that. But, you know, we also want to place them in Districts Eleven or District Two. That way, not everybody, to Wayne's point, is being inundated with one district. So we try to bounce around and place it throughout Caddo and the city, but also the parish as well.
Okay, but you do have, I mean, you know, AT&amp;T is a very big company that's highly resourced. You all do have a strategic plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you all do have some objective criteria that determines where you're going to go next. I mean, y'all are just not going around like chicken with the head cut off.
No, no, we're not doing that.
But you're just not, we just, we're not privy to that information.
I can share that information with you at a later date. I can share it tomorrow. I just can't share it in here. For proprietary reasons, we don't want people to know where our network is. We don't want people going and being malicious and cutting it. She deals with a lot of fiber cuts on a regular basis. So some things are proprietary. So I just can't share that in a public forum.
Yes, sir.
But I can share it with you immediately after this meeting.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I can, I can appreciate it. And my very final question, Madam President, is are you all regulated by the Public Service Commission in Louisiana?
Yes and no.
Yes and no?
Yes, sir. So we have sections of our network that is regulated by the Public Service Commission. And we have sections that is regulated by the FCC. Like broadband is FCC regulated.
I'm sorry.
Broadband, broadband is regulated.
Broadband is regulated by the federal communications?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what part of it is regulated by the state of Louisiana?
Some of our legacy equipments, some of our legacy services, that's regulated by the Public Service Commission. But with that said, if there's an issue that is brought up to the Public Service Commission, we answer all questions with the same tenacity. Whether it's FCC related or whether it's public service related. So we answer all those questions. We get them all the time with this broadband, DSL, wireline. We answer all the questions with the same tenacity to get those resolved.
Thank you for your answer, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell, second time around.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to wrap up again and say that we appreciate you coming. As you can see, there are different ones and they have different questions. And you all are working in a more, in the urban centers or are you out in the rural too?
Both.
Oh?
Yeah, both areas, sir.
Okay, and you're saying that in the urban centers, you all are actually underwriting this yourselves? And it's not a part of the $64 billion?
No, this is all paid for by AT&amp;T.
Okay, all right. My final question is, when we come down to right-of-way, I've been a former engineer. I had to get a lot of right-of-way for placement. Normally, your right-of-way is, say in a subdivision, is between the sidewalk and the street. Okay, a lot of this cable is being placed two and three feet back on the backside of the sidewalk. That's where, that's where people became concerned when they were, when they came home and holes were, holes were actually in their lawn.
Yeah, a lot of subdivisions have a utility service to that adjacent to the existing road right-of-way. If there's a utility service to, we'll utilize that versus being in the road right-of-way.
Okay, okay, well, that explains that if there's a setback from the sidewalk.
And then I add something to that. Once we place our main fiber, we also have to come back. If you order service, we have to place what's called a secondary fiber or fiber drop to your home as well. So that fiber is outside of the right-of-way because that goes to your home.
Well, that comes from the little boxes that you put there, as you know. Again, I know as part of broadband deployment, they provided money to bury all of the fiber, which is good this time for a number of reasons, in terms of not being aerial where we have issues with the climate. But also it's more aesthetically pleasing to the subdivision. Since you all are actually doing it yourselves and not using that money or you all are underwriting that cost too? Because they said 95% of the fiber that is to be placed is to be buried. But you all are just doing that.
Yes.
Part of your expense.
Yeah, so across the state, we did what's called a hardening project. If you go to Lafayette, New Orleans hurricanes, right? Here's probably more ice. And if we have that aerial cable, it freezes the weight of that cable can be pulled down. So we prefer to bury the cable. The issue now with burying cable is everybody's burying cable. So now we're exposed to cuts. So back in the day, it was acts of God. Now it's acts of man that's kind of impeding our infrastructure. But our first preference is to bury that fiber cable.
Well, I'm glad, glad to know that you all are, I guess, being more aggressive in terms of copper being stolen. Because it's not only being stolen, you know, from companies like yours. They're going in houses and ripping it out of the walls. So I'm glad they got some legislation for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Grayson Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all so much for coming and sharing this information. I'm not for sure if this, what you're doing is going to help with an issue that I have in my district. And that's just connecting. And over the years, people say it's because of the trees that we have and the tower. Is this going to help with the outages and the temporary like in and out that happens right now with internet service in the District Eight Broadmoor area? And I would assume, John Paul, do you, does your district have this problem as well with the trees from service? I know a lot of businesses have had to try to get additional things to help because of that.
Yes, so the Broadmoor area specifically has the largest failure rate due to squirrel chews because there are so many trees. It's not the trees. It's the squirrel chews and the attraction they have to the sheath that is around our fiber.
Interesting, okay.
It is a soy-based product. So we are trying to find other vendors to supply our fiber that does not have a soybean-based sheath on the fiber that the squirrels are attracted to and.
Yeah, please do that, maybe it will help with them wanting to stay in Broadmoor.
My peers in other states cannot understand how squirrels are tearing it up at the rate that they are specifically in that Broadmoor area. And it's rampant.
Yeah, okay.
So it's not the trees. We love the trees, it's the squirrels on the trees.
Oh, yes, we could talk about that too. Thanks. Well, thank you for sharing that information. And I have some hope for myself as a business owner and many other businesses that really, it's a struggle because of that. So thank you for sharing that, interesting.
Should turn their mic on first, seeing no other commissioners on the board to speak. You have some follow-up comments?
I have one more statement.
Sure.
We like to bring good news. So Nika's group is hiring, y'all hiring how many people?
Ten.
So 10 people, AT&amp;T.com.
Slash careers.
Okay. That's AT&amp;T.com?
Forward slash careers. And they can search for either installation technician or premise technician. And we are looking for good quality people not to supply a job. We want them here for a career.
All right.
So we, good quality people, that's, believe it or not, it's difficult to achieve, but yeah.
Take a retirement.
We know something about it. Thank you so much. So you have 10 positions available.
Please, please share that information with the community churches and everywhere. We are looking for some good people.
We will make sure that we share it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for coming.
Y'all have a great day and thanks for the invite.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lavar, if you would, could you send the link to our clerk? And he can send it to us, that link that we just discussed for the applications?
Thank you.
And so we have our last visitor, Ms. Sharpeal Welch with the Providence House.
All right. That's a great resource center to share that information for all of those new employment opportunities.
Welcome. Thank you and thank you for the opportunity. I'm just here to introduce myself as the new Executive Director of Providence House. And secondly, to thank the commission. I've had the opportunity since my hire in June to look back over some partnerships and supporters. And the commission has consistently supported what we do in the community for our homeless families. And so I'm just here to say thank you and to personally invite you so that we can get to know each other one-on-one to a reception that's been held on November 20th at the Robinson at 5:30. You'll be receiving formal invitations in the mail, but I would love to get to know each of you personally. Answer any questions you have about me and dream together to make Shreveport a better place.
Awesome, thank you so much and congratulations on your new role.
Thank you.
Do I have, are these commissioners on board for Ms. Welch? Okay, Commissioner John Paul Young?
Ms. Welch, it's so nice to meet you.
You too.
Thank you for coming to introduce yourself.
I think we've met in my former employment with Community Renewal.
Oh, yeah.
I lived in a friendship house and we helped the kids plant fruit trees.
Yes.
Yes.
No, yeah, must have been, must have been someone else. I have, I have a neighbor who lives in a house that is in terrible condition, basically collapsing. And I have made contact with him before. He's hard to reach, he doesn't have a phone. And Ms. Howard, your predecessor, was good enough to drop off information for him about how he could be maybe helped to relocate at one point. But we weren't able to really finalize contact with him. Are there still opportunities through Providence House to help someone in that position find a decent place to live?
There are. We have a homelessness prevention department and she works to mitigate homeless crisis before it happens. And so that would be one of the neighbors who would probably qualify for her to step in and try to help relocate him and give him a little bit of support for the first few months in that new location.
That would be fantastic. How can I get in touch with her? Just give you a call?
Yes, sir.
And your number's on your card, I see it now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that information. Nice to see you again.
Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I just simply want to tell you thank you for coming down and thank you all for the work that you do. I think it is so very important. And the way I operate it and my way of thinking, I am a Matthew 25 person. And I believe that you all's mission is centered around that parable. And so I thank you for continuing to think about the least of these. And I look forward to helping in any way I can. If there are any volunteer opportunities, I'd love to come by and help out.
I appreciate it.
So just wanted to thank you for coming.
I'm going to hold you to it.
Yes, ma'am, please do. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Welch, I just want to echo those thanks. Not only for what you guys, the work that you're doing now, but like you say, looking back over the years. That's why the parish has always consistently supported because you are definitely one of those jewels in our community. You guys answer the call every time we put one out and want to thank you for that. I look so, I'm so excited about working with you in the future. Providence House sits in the best district in the parish and it's District Three. So we're so excited to have you there and I look forward to working with you.
And the second best district is my district, District Four, where I live.
He next door to me, so I'll take it. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Look forward to seeing you and meeting with you personally.
You got it.
All right. Mrs. CEO?
That concludes the administration report. We'll take any questions at this time.
That concludes the Administration Report. We'll take any questions at this time.
Okay, are there any questions for Administration? Okay, these that are on the board. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Administrator, you and I spoke about the possibility of setting up that meeting for job course request. You didn't have a date. I understand that Commissioner Carthian, I mean, I guess I missed it because I had to get out on an emergency that the long-range plan, planning group is going to handle that. Do you all have a date as of yet? When are we going to discuss that?
I've talked to Jeff already. He's looking to see what's available. The thing is, again, I think everybody's pretty much tied up next week with different things going on. So the following week, at the earliest possible, we did talk to Mr. Esman, Esman, today and told him to start preparing information that he could bring to the table so we could sit down and go from there, knowing that, you know, everything would have to be vetted through legal, through administrative, things of this nature. But basically, what is it that he's truly asking of us? And over what period of time, and, you know, things of this nature. So again, he's doing his homework, and he said he will be available whenever we are available, as soon as possible, okay?
I was hoping that they had that already because I had requested it almost three weeks ago through Ms. Ambler and through one of the teachers who actually brought it to my attention. So I was hoping that they would have had that already, but since they hadn't, it's good that you reinforced that. In addition to that, I got, I got a call from the Red River Teachers Association, Teacher Union, who was interested in also trying to help Red River, River of Teachers.
Yes.
Union. They called me after that. I guess they tuned into the, to the Commission meetings too and said that they had a grant that they could possibly work on. So that may be something that could help subsidize their situation over there. That's it on there. I wanted to get an update, Madam Administrator, on this cat invasion that we have on Boss Avenue. Do we have any new information on that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That cat invasion that?
The cat invasion on Boss Avenue? I'll let Assistant Director Samuel.
It's scary. Just in time for Halloween.
Good afternoon, sir. Cat invasion, huh?
Well, you know, we talked about this before this past meeting.
Yes, sir. So, yes, we are actively setting traps and trying to get those TNR, trap neuter returned, but we won't return these because the amount. So as soon as Dr. Starks comes back, that's our bisel veterinarian that comes in and do high-volume spay neuter. So we'll take care of it and make some of them barn cats and just relocate them to other areas.
So we're all working on the Boss Avenue situation?
We got you.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Finally, Madam Chair, since I still have the floor, I wanted to take a point of personal privilege to, for a moment of silence for Lloyd Relliford. For those of you that don't know Lloyd Relliford, he was a resident of Shreveport. He recently died of a heart attack providing public service during roofing. Lloyd was a former gang member that turned his life around and got into gang prevention. And in nineteen ninety-two, I met him and he started a program called the Right Way Foundation. And of all people that he selected to be president, I was the president of it for a number of years, trying to get kids out of gangs and provide jobs. And he got into a little trouble. The FBI put a sting operation up. He was trying to raise money to do a film on gang prevention. And they needed him as a source. So when they set him up and everything, he wound up doing some prison time. And after that, he came back and went to Denver and started a gang prevention program there. And he was, and he was there for a number of years. He was there when this happened. And he's come back to Shreveport a couple of times, trying to work with the mayor and others to try to deal with the gang problem in Shreveport. So I think we owe him a debt of gratitude to try to deal with problems that we presently have. So his funeral, for those in our audience that may not know or our radio, television audience or, is finally ours, is at Praise Temple, Full Baptist Church, Full Gospel Baptist Church on Greenwood Road, Friday six to seven. And his funeral is at Good Samaritan Funeral Home on Laurel Street, Saturday at one o'clock. But I would like to have a moment of silent prayer for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Before we move to the next commissioner, I just wanted to, I have some items in my President Report that I wanted to talk to you about long-range planning because I think that we have some issues that are a little time-sensitive that we may have to have a meeting next week. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Fraser, could I ask you a couple of questions, please?
You may ask. If I can answer, I will.
Great, thank you. So we had some discussion about indemnification on Monday. And I wanted to sort of see if I could understand the situation a little better. Our parish ordinance and its Section two forty-eight says that a commissioner will be indemnified unless there's a finding by the attorney that there's clear and convincing evidence that the commissioner was not acting in the discharge of his duties or within the scope of office, or then that applies to any employee. And so I wanted to ask you, what kinds of factors would you consider when you determine if somebody is acting in their duty or within their scope of office?
Commissioner, I actually sent a memo with some detailed information for that a little bit earlier this afternoon. Have you had an opportunity to review it?
I have not seen it, no.
May I ask maybe if you want to take a look at that and then you can give me a call with any further questions?
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Thank you. I'll take a look. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Seeing no other commissioners on the board for any questions or comments for Administration? All right. Next item.
That brings us to the President's Report.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be as brief as possible, maybe about thirty minutes long.
Take your time.
We feel like talking today, but some of this information I'm going to read directly from the new Her Leadership Lens. But before I begin there, I want to say congratulations again to Commissioner Ron Carthian for being honored by his district for his dedication and commitment to your constituents. I am proud to work alongside you in this parish and in this role. I also would like to extend my condolences and prayers to the person found in Twelve Mile by you, who was a twenty-year-plus employee of the city of Shreveport. So please keep everyone lifted as this incident is an ongoing investigation. On yesterday evening, our Youth Leadership Alliance recognized and actually selected their new officers. And those leaders were chosen to be the new Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. It was such a great meeting, y'all. This is something that if you get an opportunity to sit in with these youth, please come and just witness what they're actually doing. I came to just observe and was able to speak to some of them. But the presentations that were done by our Juvenile Services Director, it blew my mind as well as from our Animal Services Department. Juvenile Services reminded me that it's time for us, Commissioner Stefan Jones, to start back hosting some meetings at the Juvenile Detention Center. Some of the things were full circle, and it's time for us to get back in there and have some meetings at that location. I was also reminded of how important it is for us to adopt pets. And I think that I've shared before, but I'm publicly sharing today that I rescued a pet. I have a little Yorkie that I adopted from Caddo Parish Animal Shelter. And she is absolutely beautiful and spoiled. But I want to encourage everyone to go on the website, look at those pictures, go and visit the center and save the animals, adopt a pet so that they will not have to be euthanized. I also want to say thank you to the Communications Team for helping us to get to know our CPYLA members a little better. It was phenomenal the way that those reels are being created. I cannot wait to see the video. And we have a new handle on Instagram. Whitney, is it @ParishOfCaddo? Follow @ParishOfCaddo on Instagram. @ParishOfCaddo. Thank you, Madam Director. And also to our governmental liaison, I want to say publicly to you, thank you because you are doing an awesome job with the youth. And they were in their official uniforms, well-engaged. And the only thing that I have that I would like to see is something that we actually already talked about, and that's a bigger meeting space for them so that they can get busy on some of those future initiatives that I gave them homework to do yesterday. I want to also say to our clerk, who was here until seven o'clock with us last night, I really appreciate you all standing in and staying in the gap. Teamwork actually makes the dream work. So I appreciate you all for being such amazing leaders. We will have several committee meetings during the next few weeks. As I mentioned, we have some very time-sensitive issues that we need to discuss. I know that scheduling is really tight, but because of where we are in this year, we need to get some things discussed in committee. So I wanted to ask you to, if you would, look at the schedule and get with Jeff. And he was telling me about some things that we do have on next week. And we need to schedule a long-range planning committee. We have a few things that needs to be on those agendas, as well as a Personnel and Policy Committee. And I was also going to ask Commissioner Grace Anne Blake to schedule a Natural Resource Committee meeting before our next work session. It's not as pressing as these issues that we need to discuss in long-range planning. But if we could get it on before our next work session, November third, somewhere before then.
I'm going to be out of town, Madam President. Maybe we can look at doing something, I mean, as soon as tomorrow or?
We have to have a twenty-four-hour notice.
Monday?
If it, if it works, I'll be glad to just reach out to the committee chairs of all three of the ones you just mentioned. And we'll try to coordinate with your schedules and the schedule that we know is available because we certainly, like Madam Chairman just mentioned, we do have some things that we know are going to be in the way of some of the meeting times that might work. But we're happy to work with you all to schedule some dates.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. I also wanted to take an opportunity to just shine the light on October being Breast Cancer Awareness and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Because of this month having such a powerful purpose, this time is used to honor the strength, spread awareness, and support those impacted by breast cancer and domestic violence. Project Celebration has a purple box in our for years. And I encourage my colleagues to please take the time to make a donation and put some items in those boxes. The See Right Pink Ribbon Project is hosting a Pink Out Sunday. We've honored this organization several times at Caddo Parish Commission. And those events will happen at Stonewall Baptist Church at their eight and eleven a.m. services. Also wanted to say thank you for painting the town red for our Sickle Cell Walk and Run. It was truly a tremendous success. It brought families together, friends, and our community partners in support of awareness, education, and hope. The participants walked and ran in honor of those living with sickle cell disease and those warriors who have passed on as well, showing that our commitment to the cause extends beyond September's Awareness Month. I also want to take this opportunity to remember Aleah and Danielle. Our community continues to grieve the heartbreaking loss of Aleah and Danielle, two precious children whose lives were tragically cut short in a recent house fire in Shreveport. Their passing has deeply touched the hearts of families across Caddo Parish. As we honor their memory, we ask anyone with information that could help investigators bring clarity and justice to this tragedy to please come forward and contact the Shreveport Fire Department or Caddo Crime Stoppers at three one eight six seven three seven three. Let us continue to lift their loved ones in prayer, stand united in compassion, and work together to ensure that no family endures such a devastating loss again. Switching gears, I want to say congratulations to Letty Bee's Pathway to Peace. Letty Bee's Pathway to Peace is a sober living home in Shreveport that is located in the Moore Town community. It is now open. This home provides women with a safe and supportive environment to achieve lasting sobriety. If you're interested in more information, because every step forward matters, you can call three one eight three three eight zero eight eight three. And I will hold the rest of my President's Report to our next meeting. And if you would like this information, I do have Her Leadership Lens available. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Great job on this newsletter. All right. Commissioner Burrell, are you on the board?
Just want to remind the Madam Chair, is the Police Jury Association Conference?
Yes.
I believe that's on the twenty-eighth.
Correct.
So I just wanted to remind them of that. I think that's Bojor?
Six o'clock PM. Bojor is hosting it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that reminder. And I was also told that is Brendan Lee still here with us? Fire District Chief was here. He's gone. Okay. We wanted to recognize him, but he's already left. And that will conclude my President's Report. Hope everyone has a great weekend. Stay safe and enjoy this beautiful weather.
Thank you so much. That moves us forward. We don't have any public hearing on zoning ordinances scheduled for today. So we'll move forward to the public hearing on ordinances where we have two for today. Would you like me to read them, please, and you can open one joint?
Yes, if you would, please read them collectively, and we'll open up one public hearing for them both.
Wonderful. The first one is a public hearing for Ordinance sixty-five sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund and the Orleans Gas Fund to provide an additional appropriation for the Safe Summer Program and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance number sixty-five sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-five. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Economic Development Fund to provide an appropriation for Christmas in Roseland and otherwise provide with respect thereto. And that comes from the Economic Development Committee.
All right. At this time, we would like to declare the public hearing open for a public hearing for Ordinance sixty-five sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five and Ordinance sixty-five sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-five. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against either of these ordinances?
Well, Madam Chairman, thank you. Thank you for having us today. I am Marilyn Weller.
This is Allison Richardson. I just got to know her.
Okay.
I live in Alexandria, Louisiana, but this is my second home. The American Rose Center is my place. It is the best place. We've been putting on Christmas in Roseland for forty-two years. And we have been the headquarters of the American Rose Society, a national organization right here in Shreveport, for fifty years. The organization's a hundred thirty-three years old, but right now it's suffering some financial trouble. And it's decided to split away from the gardens, thinking that they should furnish, focus their efforts on members and membership and mission. And the best news is the gardens are so much better off because we don't have to support the society anymore. And the other best news is the community of Shreveport, for the very first time, will now be the owners of the gardens, whereas we've just been visitors to the area for these fifty years. So I think that's going to be really great news. And it's the gift that you are contemplating and you have spoken of before is so important to us. It actually made Christmas in Roseland possible this year. And I want to tell you that the Shreve- And want to tell you that the Shreveport Visitors Bureau gives us credit for about two million dollars in annual contribution to the market activity in this area every year. So it does have a great benefit. But the other beautiful thing is we want you to remember these gardens when you want to go to a lovely place with towering pine trees and roses and beautiful walks and trees and flowers. It's a wonderful place to be, a wonderful place to bring your family, and so we know we will succeed. And you are kicking us off in the best way possible with this gift if you choose to vote that way. But we did read the press when they were here at the last meeting and your comments were so much appreciated.
Awesome.
Very much appreciated. And Allison and I would like to invite you to the grand opening of Christmas in Roseland this year on December fourth. And I heard another event on the fourth, but we'd love to have you on December fourth or throughout the Christmas season, all the way up to the night before Christmas Eve.
Thank you so much. Thank you for speaking in favor of ordinance sixty-five.
I am certainly in favor and Allison and I vote wholeheartedly in favor of this motion.
Thank you so much. And what time is that on December fourth?
I would say six.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I just wanted to say thank you for answering the call. As I continue to work with a national organization, I also am here and so being able to maintain wonderful tourist opportunity and things for memories for our children and future generations. So thank you again to the commission for contemplating this gift.
All right. Ms. Ellison, before you leave, just state your name and address for the record, please, and then we'll have the first speaker to say her name and address for the record also.
Allison Richardson, eighty-eight seventy-seven Jefferson Page Road, Shreveport, seven one 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 nine.
Thank you.
And I am Marilyn Wellen, of course, eighty-eight seventy-seven Jefferson Page Road, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against ordinance sixty-five sixty-three or sixty-five sixty-five? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay, that brings us to, well, since we also have no zoning ordinances, we'll skip past that and to section fourteen on your agenda. So we are now at ordinances for final passage. The first one to be considered today is adopting ordinance sixty-five sixty-three of twenty twenty-five. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund and the Oil and Gas Fund to provide an additional appropriation for the Safe Summer Program and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
All right. I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas, second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to englobo and adopt ordinances sixty-five sixty-six.
Sixty.
I'm sorry. Sixty-five sixty, during sixty-five sixty-five of section fourteen.
Okay. And that's been second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Okay. Would you like to speak on your motion?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to one-up Commissioner Thomas by englobo and adopting section fourteen, section seventeen, section eighteen, section twenty, and I think that's it.
Okay. Are you seconded?
I am friendly to that amendment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you. I'd like to receive some background information on ordinance sixty-five sixty-three regarding the Safe Summer Program. I mean, we're in October now. What's the issue? What are we funding?
I guess the name may not be really indicative of the program, so it's basically programs that we're funding year-round through our Parks and Recreation Department for various events. So, and it's to help keep students involved in activities, youth involved in activities. So we've recognized that that is actually a year-round necessity. And so because of our focus year-round, we need some additional funds in that area.
I understand that there's a need to keep our youth occupied, there's a benefit to keeping our youth occupied, and we need to employ minds and bodies in productive, athletic, healthy ways. So maybe we should change it to the youth program or something.
Yes, I agree. We've talked about that several times of changing the name because it expands so much further than the summer. And in all actuality, it is credited to a lot of the reduction in crime that we see across Caddo Parish that spills over into the cities of Shreveport and likewise. So we are looking at that. That will be one of the things that we're going to discuss.
Thank you, Madam President. So ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Seeing no other discussion? Commissioner Crackman, are you on the board to speak? Okay. Commissioner Crackman?
Microphone. Your microphone.
I'm not sure if my question's for administration or not. The Christmas in Roseland, whenever they were here last, it was my understanding that it would take somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars to get them going for the season. I'm curious if the other half of those funds aren't secured, where lies our funds that we're gifting to them?
They're still here and they can address, but they have made substantial progress on that number. I think they can address that better than I can.
Please.
The fifty thousand dollar gift that is under consideration will be about half of the total expense. The thing about it is there's a whole lot of upfront costs before we begin to get revenue. And so this really ensures that we will have a success. And I think we will have a really smashing success, thanks to you all. It was a little bit iffy, really bit iffy, you know, because of the transition, but we're working hard on it. We're already putting the things up and it really will make us, make it possible that we'll have a success.
So this fifty thousand dollars will kind of kick off the seeking out the other fifty to keep it going?
That's a good way to put it, for sure. And then we have installment costs, labor costs, lighting costs, you know, things that come up before. And then ticket sales begin in November and it starts to, you know, the money starts to flow. We do have a few other donations for sponsorships. They're much smaller than yours, I must say, but they do help, but mainly it's ticket sales. It's been good in the past and it will be great this year.
Okay.
We are finalizing some paperwork for presenting sponsor. We have a few other sponsorships that are coming available because y'all did answer the call and gave faith in the community. Other community members were feeling comfortable to invest, so thank you again for that.
So the confidence is there.
Yes.
That was a beautiful point. It was because of the interest that was, that people read in the newspaper, stories about this meeting and the need and where we stood, that other people felt that, yes, let's go. People who gave us maybe five hundred dollars last year gave us two thousand this year. So, you know, and someone walks in with a hundred dollars and says, I want to help. You know, that was just beautiful. And that's the way it's been going.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate the question.
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Of course, the concerns that were just expressed by Commissioner Crackman were also my concerns when they initially came before us. I think the lady in the gold, she was here. I don't think the other lady, both of y'all were here making your presentation initially? She was here. She's an additional lady. I think my question was after they went through this exhaustive process discussing their shortfalls, my question was, do y'all have anything on it? And of course, at that time, they didn't have nothing on it. So I'd just like to applaud you all. You all have come a long ways in this regard. And of course, since then, you know, we've had you all to come up and make additional presentations and ask and answer a plethora of questions in our Economic Development Committee. So I feel very comfortable at this point in supporting this effort. And again, I thank Commissioner Crackman for the question. I think it may be, we can't talk about it enough, you know, this is very important for our community and I feel very confident that we're going to be able to support this effort. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Please vote. You want to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess my only question is to the ladies from this organization, how does a person, because again, it's been addressed where we go, how we go, to raise this money? But again, if I'm sitting here, I hear this particular, view this YouTube, whatever they're looking at, how do an individual go about obtaining a ticket? Where should they call? Where should they come? Things of this nature. Because the whole idea is for us to support you all as much as possible, not only with the fifty thousand dollars, but as many people as possible come and support you, those in the past and hopefully some in the future as well going forward.
Right. We do have some information up on our website, rose.org. We are currently getting all of our information updated for our specific Christmas in Roseland twenty twenty-five and our social media and graphics designer let me know that she's putting the finishing touches on that, so it should be ready to go very, very soon, anticipating the good news.
All right.
And that motion carries with the? That motion carries with eleven in support, nine in opposition, and one absent. And that leaves us only to introduce the items in section sixteen, which are available for introduction by title today. We have two. The first is to introduce ordinance number sixty-five sixty-six and ordinance to close and abandon two portions of the road right-of-way and the forming factory subdivision in section eight. Township sixteen north range thirteen west in the parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto in District Nine. The next item is to introduce ordinance sixty-five sixty-seven and ordinance amending the twenty twenty-five budget to amend the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Housing Choice Voucher Program and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Following those, you have adopted the other items leading us up to your communiquees and committee reports second round. And before you get started or as you get started for any requests you may make, I would like to just take this opportunity to remind you that tomorrow is the Intergovernmental Committee meeting at lunchtime. So certainly appreciate y'all's attendance at that.
All right. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. John Proct for his appointment to the Fire District Three Board. Think he's here? Okay. Congratulations. All right. Commissioner Ron Carthlin.
Thank you, Madam President. Real quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge I had an opportunity to step in for Commissioner Jones today. The Shreveport Police Department Substation at Seventieth and St. Vincent had a groundbreaking today. And there are some great things that's going to happen, not only just having a substation, but they plan on really having a lot of activities for young people because again, when you look at it, it's going to actually be a park and also a substation as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Parliamentarian Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I just once again wanted to congratulate Boogertee Washington of over seventy-five years of impact in not only our community, but in those young individuals that have graduated from the institution's lives. They have provided so much, such a great foundation for those members of our community. So I just wanted to make sure that I thank them, applaud them for the seventy-fifth anniversary, and also invite the public to their seventy-fifth anniversary gala this Saturday. Thank you.
Parliamentarian Thomas, how can you get one of those banners that's like out front that's congratulating C.E. Byrd here?
I'm unaware, ma'am, but I will investigate that and get you an answer shortly.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Finally, Fair Park, I believe, is celebrating their ninety-seventh birthday today.
Is it?
That's what I had on my calendar.
All right.
But anyway, congratulations if it's not.
Well, thank you. Seeing no one else on the board?